Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioner's Court. Today is Tuesday, November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, and it is ten a.m. All members of the court are present, this meeting is called by order. Everyone will please rise to the invitation by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the Pageant of the Lees.
You're having my thought that we thank you for today, Lord, we thank you for this week of Thanksgiving. Lord, we acknowledge your divine providence into our life and the many blessings that you bring into our life. Lord, today we pray for wisdom, Lord, as we conduct the people's business. Lord, I lift up Red Cooper today, Lord, as he's in the hospital. Lord, I pray for a speedy recovery and total and complete healing, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approved minutes of the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two register meeting and November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting as presented by the county clerk, Connie Becker. Motion by Commissioner Roberts, signed by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams, county treasurer. Good morning, Mrs. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, two hundred twenty thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. On our cash report summary and general checking account, we have seven million, six hundred thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. In tax pool, general, one million, one thousand, three oh seven eighty-eight, for a total in cash funds of eight million, six hundred, one thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-seven cents.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, signed by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and we'll go to number six, since that's also Mrs. McWilliams. Consider request by Deborah McWilliams, county treasurer, to approve amendments to the bank depository contract with PNC Bank due to a change in the interest rate effective as of August, two thousand twenty-two. Mrs. McWilliams?
In our original contract, we had a set amount of interest that the bank would pay us after the earnings on the excess. We, the bank wants to leave that number open, so as the interest rates rise, they can pass the extra interest on to us. The word, only wording different in this is it doesn't give a set amount, and then it still keeps that floor, that point one-two, which was in our original contract.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, signed by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McWilliams. Item five, authorization to pay county bill as presented by the county auditor, Angela Door. Good morning, Mrs. Door.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for November the ninth are eighty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and four cents. Pre-approved expenditures for November the sixteenth through the seventeenth is five hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. Expenditures for Commissioner's court today are two hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and seven cents, for a total expenditures and transfers of eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Gross payroll for November the seventeenth was six hundred thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-one cents, and the total transfers for that payroll was nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, signed by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Door.
Thank you.
Item number seven, consider adoption of resolution thirty dash twenty-two in support of project safety for our local communities and protections to the Big Thicket National Preserve with the retention of native vegetation on U.S. Highway sixty-nine gateway to the Big Thicket Parkway as requested by Ellen Buchanan and Mary Bernard with the Big Thicket Association. This time I'd ask Ms. Buchanan to please come forward. Morning, Ms. Buchanan, how are you doing?
Good morning, I'm doing great.
All right, we have a resolution here that was presented to us by you on behalf of the Big Thicket Association, and other than we changed the form up a little bit, the wording is exactly the way you sent it to us. So if you don't mind, if you would just kind of brief the court and the public as to what you're asking the court to resolve today, and I'd ask you to keep it to about five minutes or less, but if you need more time, let me know.
I'll keep it short.
Thank you.
Six years ago, during the public meeting for the Pine Island Bayou Bridge there at Jefferson County, Hardin County, you know, there were probably four hundred people there because they were concerned about the boat ramp. And I was concerned about, excuse me, damage to the Big Thicket because it's on either side, mitigation, if any mitigation needed to happen, and then future projects because we knew that sixty-nine was going to expand. And so I was looking for someone to talk to. I found TechDOT's Director of Planning and Development, talked to him, Adam Jack, and he said, you know, we need to have a meeting. Within two weeks, he called a meeting, folks that were interested in how do we develop these highways? We know that we have to have safety, we know that we have to have a way for folks to safely evacuate for, and quickly for hurricanes. We all had family members stay on Highway sixty-nine, mine did, for twelve hours trying to get to Tyler. So we're all about safety and getting people out of the area quickly for hurricanes. And so for five years, we worked with TechDOT on the expansion of Highway sixty-nine, and the first section was going to be from ten oh three to Warren. As y'all probably know, there was a great meeting in Warren at the school there, I think two hundred people showed up on a cruddy, cruddy evening. They had all the plans laid out, you could vote on different things that you like, so they did surveys, several surveys, and our meetings continued, they called it the environmental roundtable, and we would meet once or twice a year and talk about different things, and how do we build a safe, efficient highway and maintain our natural resources, which is the Big Thicket? We live in the Big Thicket. The trees, the forest, that's our culture. Forest and water are our culture here in Hardin County and have been the lifeblood of Hardin County. So how do we maintain that? TechDOT's mission, vision, values, and goals incorporate all that. They incorporate the public, their input into these plans, and incorporate natural resources. About a year ago, the communication with TechDOT stopped, just weren't hearing from them, didn't understand what the deal was, and then it comes out, we were not included in a new plan, but a new plan came out to the median that was to be a forested median from one oh three to Warren was now going to be clear cut. So there are several unintended consequences or intended consequences that happened with that. We're concerned with, they're going to cut right up to the stream sides. So you have erosion, you have sedimentation, you have more flooding, which y'all are dealing with this afternoon on your agenda. And then it is, you know, trees are our culture, so you're doing away with it. If you've been to Zavala and seen that mess that's there, and it's not a mess because it's just a clear cut with non-native grasses growing right there by the U.S. Forest Service Forest, that, so all that non-native seed's going to go into the, into the U.S. Forest. So we don't want that to happen here. Big Thicket National Preserve, one of the things that they fight all the time are non-native species, or it's grasses or trees. So we want a safe highway, we want folks to evacuate, but we also want it to be the Big Thicket Parkway. You know, we always thought this is going to be a great economic driver. Now, we're still having the bike trail, thank you, TechDOT, we're still having the kayak and canoe launch there, but this could be an economic driver. I can see a little coffee shop, you know, we've got the coffee shop out here, coffee shop, sandwich shop there at Village Mills for hikers and bikers, more bed and breakfast coming in. But if you make it this, that straight shot, no one's going to stop in Hardin County, they're going to drive as fast as they can. It'll be interesting to see in little restaurants in Zavala, how many of those shut down, because nobody's going to stop now in Zavala, they just drive straight. So we want to protect our culture, we want to protect our natural resources that we have here in Hardin County and Tyler County, and we would just appreciate, let's, let's talk. I mean, when I talked to TechDOT, there was, you know, there was no talk, the answer was no, and the decision has been made. So we would like the public to be brought back into that, and let's see what alternatives that we can come up with. So thank you very much, Court, for hearing.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. And this is not a surprise to Ms. Buchanan or any of her group, but I've invited TechDOT to come today, and Martin Gonzalez is the Beaumont District Engineer, and he's agreed to come, in fact, he couldn't be here at our last meeting, that's why we tabled the resolution to this meeting. So of course, Mr. Gonzalez has had a copy of the resolution since probably a day or two after we got it, and has pointed out some issues with it, and so I asked him to come today and brief the court regarding why he's asking for us not to adopt the resolution, and basically give TechDOT side of, you know, what's going on regarding this sixty-nine project. So, Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having me, I appreciate it, Judge, commissioners, thank y'all for the opportunity to come and visit with you this morning. And just a little background, obviously, like Ms. Buchanan shared with y'all, this project is taking our existing U.S. sixty-nine, our two-lane roadway, and widening to a four-lane roadway with a median divided, and having for some evacuation lanes available on the, providing a wider shoulder so that it can be used in evacuation lanes on the northbound. So the reason why I'm here is to, with regards to the resolution, I agree with some of the statements that are made in that resolution. We have definitely had a good working relationship with the county, and, and I know that the county is just as concerned with safety as we are, and that's important, and I appreciate Ms. Buchanan sharing that with you this morning and putting that in the resolution. I do have to just correct one point on the resolution, it states that U.S. sixty-nine is identified by the Transportation Code as the gateway to the Big Thicket Parkway, but it's not, it's the, the Big Thicket National Preserve Parkway. So the Big Thicket National Preserve Parkway starts in I-ten in Beaumont, and it ends in Loop two eighty-seven in Lovekeen. So all that stretch of road is known as the Big Thicket National Preserve Parkway. So I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that from the resolution. And the changes that we're proposing with regards to the clear zone can be seen in other sections of this Parkway, as Ms. Buchanan alluded to in Zavala. But one thing that I would like to know is that no property from the preserve, no property from the preserve itself was used or will be used, we have not purchased anything from the Big Thicket Preserve for this project to happen. It didn't happen initially, it is not happening now. So everything that we're doing is staying within TechDOT right away. The trees that we are removing from the median are all within our TechDOT's property. We have not touched anything, or we do not find out touching anything along the Big Thicket Preserve. So in regards to the resolution, we haven't been presented, TechDOT has not been presented with any data demonstrating that the removal of a hundred and thirteen acres of trees and the design would impact the hydrology. As Ms. Buchanan mentioned, that there's concerns with erosion and with, with other issues with flooding and things like that, but the data that was compiled by our consultants, which is the same consultant that started this project out, and is currently still the same consultant that we have on board, showed us that not only are we increasing capacity on the ditches, because we're going from two V ditches to one large trapped zootage ditch, which is going to increase the capacity of the water that we have in there, but it's also lowering the velocities. So the velocities with which the water goes into these streams is going to be greatly reduced as opposed to what it is now with the V ditches. So if, if anyone has data or studies that show something with regards to the, the erosion and the velocities, we would definitely like to see that, but as of right now, we don't have that information. So on the resolution, it states those, and I would really be concerned about a resolution that does not have the data to support that information. So, you know, we're talking about safety enhancements, right? We've been tasked by the Transportation Commission, that started back in two thousand nineteen, and two thousand twenty started the initiative of our Road to Zero, zero fatalities on Texas highways by twenty fifty. Now, it's a, it's a hard task to do, but zero fatalities by twenty fifty, cut it in half by twenty thirty-five, that's the goal. And along that, we are trying to do everything possible to improve our clear zones, to, to try and help mitigate some of those, those issues that we see on the roadway. Some of that is striking fixed objects. Trees account for between two thousand eighteen and twenty twenty, nineteen percent of rural fatalities nationwide involve trees. So it's my responsibility to find ways to make roadways safer. And I would hate to wait until somebody loses a life when I can actually do something to prevent it now. So I do appreciate your time, and this is an important project for the area, so I just wanted to make sure that, that we share that information with you. And we do have the layouts with us, I'll be happy to share that with anybody. We did not change anything regarding the layouts of this project, it's still saying, laying in the same alignment as it was day one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. At this time, I would ask the members of the court if they had any comments they'd like to make or any questions they'd like to ask of Ms. Buchanan or Mr. Gonzalez.
Judge, I would just like to state that during the process of this project, I sit as the chairman of the Transportation Committee through Southeast Texas Regional Planning, where the regional engineer, at that time it was someone else, not yourself, also sit on that, and Mr. Alan Jacks sits on that committee as well, so there was numerous meetings with the public, just like Ms. Buchanan stated, in Warren and different places. So this is an ongoing project that, that has been planned, and TechDOT has done above and beyond, in my opinion, in notifying the public of what's going to happen and their procedure of how they've done this. I will not support this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioner, any comments or questions?
I think on the terminology gateway to Big Thicket, what's Big Thicket Parkway? When I sat in on the meetings, I remember seeing information where it would say the gateway to the Big Thicket, so that may be where some of the confusion's coming from. The scenic portion of it, of having the ducks on the bridge, I think it was presented to us as the gateway to the Big Thicket, honestly. And then, in a lot of those meetings, I think a lot of the concerns from the association were affirmed, so I'll just use that word, affirmed, in our meetings, very cordial meetings. And then the only question that I have from Martin is, is it too late to look at the non-native vegetation being planted and maybe exchanging it with what's native to the Big Thicket, if that is their biggest concern?
Okay, so if, if you don't mind, I would like to address the, the structure that was removed from the project. That structure was an aesthetic piece, which was referred to as a signature bridge, and historically with other, or signature bridges across the state, the cities, the counties pay for those structures. We, we build a standard bridge. Anything above and beyond is the responsibility of the, the local municipality, and I think that was not shared at the beginning of this project, and that's unfortunate. But part of my role as the district engineer is, when I see some expenditures that are not in accordance with how we pay for things, I need to make sure that I, I have to be a good steward of the taxpayer's money.
Sure.
So that structure had to go. It was a seven million dollar estimated structure, which, you know, that was not shared from the very beginning. So I think it was important for us to make sure that we made that clear. As far as the, the grasslands and things like that, obviously, as we replace trees, our intent is to plant our grass like we typically do and maintain that. As far as anything that's native to this area, we would definitely consider something like that, especially as it comes to the, into the streams, like close to the streams, putting some, some low-profile type shrubbery, anything that's going to be, that would be helpful, as far as that is concerned, to prevent, to help with the runoff, and, and I'm fully supportive of, of looking for native features of that sort to help mitigate some of those concerns.
So do you have someone in your office, because I know y'all are going to start this project, it needs to go, but do you have someone that could maybe work with the association on communicating what's native, non-native, and try to come up with a solution on that?
So we do have some landscape architects in Austin. We unfortunately don't have any landscape, landscape architects in our district, but, but we do have some on staff in, in Austin that, that are definitely very knowledgeable on those type of areas, and I'd be happy to have them visit, even with the association, to see what is, what is native to this region, and, and as far as, like I said, as long as it is something that is low-profile, that is not going to endanger the public, I'm fully open to that conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Hello. Going back on what you were saying about the safety factors and the trees, I'm, I was sitting there trying to think of any accidents that I can remember along that section of roadway, and I've been, I was in law enforcement quite a few years here, as well as some of these other officers. Do y'all have any statistics on any accidents on that, on that section? You know, that's just my, because you were bringing up statistics from all over the country, and I'm just curious about that section.
Absolutely. So the crashes involved in trees, shrubs, or landscaping from two thousand seventeen to current. So district-wide, so I have, I have eight counties under my supervision, okay, to include, includes Hardin, Jefferson, Tyler, Jasper, Newton, Orange, Chambers and Living, okay? Within those eight counties, I have thirteen hundred and ninety-eight crashes from two thousand seventeen to current, thirteen hundred and ninety-eight crashes involving trees, shrubs, or landscape. Thirteen ninety, thirteen hundred and ninety-eight crashes, thirty-nine of those were fatalities, a hundred and three were serious injuries. Now, just the U.S. sixty-nine Big Thicket Corridor, which the corridor is going to be from the, the split in, in Lumberton, the U.S. ninety-six, sixty-nine split, all the way to the Angelina County line. Along that corridor, we've had seventy-eight crashes, two fatalities, and eight serious injuries within, from two seventeen, two thousand seventeen to now.
For those that like, where the road curves, or there's not straight, you know, straight through, like, I know this up here is pretty straight, and that's, that's why I'm wondering, and, and that's why I was asking if there had been any accidents up here, because I know that's straight through, and, you know, I was just wondering, that's, that's my curiosity. And I understand you're given a broad spectrum of it, but in that particular, they're, they're concerned about this particular area, and that's, that's what I was wondering, why, if, if there's not been any accidents there, why would that be a safety factor?
So within, within this particular limits of this project itself, we've had five serious injuries, which a serious injury, so we, when we classify a TechDOT, K's, A's, and B's. A K is a, is a fatality, an A is an incapacitating injury, and a B is a non-incapacitated. So we've had five As within that stretch of road, within the limits of this, from two thousand seventeen to now.
Compared to the trees?
Related to trees, yes, from hitting trees. So, so from that standpoint, I, I say again, people make mistakes, and I understand, people are getting on phones, and, and we have a, a behavior issue. We understand that people need to get off the phone, driving under the influence, they need to wear their seat belts, all those things, we understand that. But what we're trying to do is to, when people make these mistakes and drive off the road, mistakes should not cost them their lives by having a tree. So, and that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish here. If we, by increasing the, increasing the clear zone, we're hopeful that that's going to give people that, that recovery room to be able to adjust and regroup, maybe at that point, they realize what they've done, they put the phone down, and they carry on their way. But having a tree so close to the, to the lanes of travel, that makes it a challenge.
If it's a behavioral issue, isn't that really out of anyone else's control, like that individual?
So, yes, part of, part of what we're doing, we have, at TechDOT, we have what is the three D's, engineering, education, and enforcement. So the education is part of it, we need to continue working to, to try to help people. I, I think all of us in this room can do better about how we drive and some of the habits that we use. I don't think there's anybody that's perfect out there that does not ever pick up the phone when, when it rings, or it, it dings, or something like that, or they engage in other activities. But along with that, I have to do my job from an engineering standpoint as well, and the goal is to provide a safe, travelable roadway, so that if somebody does make a mistake, for whatever reason, they don't have to hit a fixed object that's on them. So it goes hand in hand.
And, yeah, so there was five?
Yes, sir.
In that particular area?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just, you know, I, I kind of looked, we looked at the drawings in the back, so this is going to be a divided highway?
Yes, sir.
So, are y'all going to have barriers to keep vehicles from going head-on on the other lanes? I know fixed objects, one thing, but moving objects, another. Can you stop cars from doing that, or is it going to be just open highway?
So depending on the width of the median, where the median is wide enough, we don't have to provide a, a median barrier. And some of the ones where it narrows down, we will have to provide a barrier. So as that, as that goes down to some of the areas where we have to do the space, have to kind of bottom down a little bit, we'll have to put some sort of barrier in it.
I understand that you'll have to remove some trees and stuff for the drainage aspect of it, but I'm just trying to think of, of the, between ten oh three and Warren, how many medians there are with actual trees in them? And I can only think of a few, just a small strip. Is there more out of Hardin County?
No, so currently, the section here in Hardin County, right, right north of Kims, is the only part that we have currently, four lane divided, and then it goes into Billy's Creek back to two lanes, right? That's where we're going to be converting to the four lane all the way through. And a point that I would like to also bring up is that the proposed alignment, so our four lane divided section, the, the proposed median, in some cases, it's going to be running along our existing U.S. sixty-nine roadbed. So the median on day one would just be nothing but grass median, because it's going to be in the middle of what is currently U.S. sixty-nine. So as this design was done from the beginning, because I say again, I have not changed the alignment whatsoever on this project. All, the only direction that I gave my staff is, we are removing the trees from the median. So the original alignment has never changed from day one to now, and the proposed on day one, there's no way that there can be any trees on there, because there's really not a whole lot of trees there now. So in, in what will be the proposed alignment, and where it shows some, from what they're trying to conserve, like utilized, as this project goes, as it meanders throughout the, the alignment for the, the eleven miles, well, the eight miles of actual construction, at some point, the, the proposed median will be existing U.S. sixty-nine, what is currently U.S. sixty-nine, okay? And sorry, I'm using my hands because I'm a visual topic guy. So, and as it goes, the proposed lane will be on existing U.S. sixty-nine, and then to the other side of it will be the southbound lane or northbound lane, as it kind of goes back and forth. So in between, there may be some vegetation, and, and that's what the, the trees that, that are, are being alluded to on, on this resolution. So in some of those cases, there would be some trees. So that's what we're looking to, you know, be removing with this project. I will say that the renderings, and it's unfortunate that the renderings that were provided on day one with that, that bridge, for example, with the birds and all that stuff, and it showed you a median with full-grown trees, which that is not possible in this project, it just isn't, because on day one, that would not be the case. What nobody disclosed in these conversations was that the designers put one point five million dollars worth of planting new trees out there, which would take years for those, you know, we're talking fifteen, twenty, thirty years for them to get full grown to what these are now. which would take years for those, you know, we're talking fifteen, twenty, thirty years for them to get full grown to what these are now. So, it was a little bit misleading for our consultants, and, and for everybody that was involved in that rendering, and I've addressed that with the consultants, because that should have never been shown like that.
Right, Martin, that's where I was saying, I think whenever we had those meetings, it affirmed what Ellen was saying. That's why I used that word affirmed, because of those, those drawings and renderings that I saw.
Yes, sir. And, and, and that's, that's unfortunate, uh, that, that it was presented that way. Uh, because quite frankly, and I'll tell you, I, I don't have any problem sharing this information with anyone. I've told my consultant, I was irresponsible for y'all to show it like that. Because flat out, it is misleading of the public.
Well, personally, I do enjoy the trees that are in the median existence. And I would, um, rather if there was a drunk driver, or a driver that was texting, or doing something else that was coming through the median and would hit a tree rather than hit my family.
Yeah.
They may have said, "Oh, wow." But, I also am in the position that we have the right to do whatever we need to do in our right ways. And I feel that y'all have the same. But if there is any way that those trees can stay, then I would prefer that they stay.
Anything else from the Commissioner's Board? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Ms. Buchanan, do you have anything you'd like to say? I can't find you. There you are. So, Commissioner Kirkendall had asked about making sure that, uh, the consultants from Tech Dot would consult with y'all on the native vegetation. I'd like to know what your feelings are towards that.
A- absolutely, because we talked to them, you know, the context, content meetings, talked with them a lot about that. Um, a- and I want to say this, we were like, "No, you don't have to plant all this stuff. You, you have the Big Thicket around you, don't plant a flower bed at Village Creek Bridge, we don't need that." We didn't really want that bridge. So the bridge leaving is, that's not an issue for us at all. Yes, you know, we will, we will work with them on native vegetation for sure. Um, because we, we didn't like some of the stuff that they wanted to do. We realized that trees would be planted, it would take them a while to grow. That's, that's not an issue either. Um, I would say this with trees, though, and what I don't understand with Tech Dot, look at the Y at Lumberton. If trees are a safety issue, why was that whole Y planted in trees?
So I actually brought that up to, uh, Sarah a couple of days ago. And she said, even though it seems like that was just last year, it was actually whenever Tucker was still here, which is, uh, five or six years ago, so...
Well, I will just say this, I was just on Loop ninety-nine in Houston. They're planting trees right there now. They're planting trees on fifty-nine, and they're planting trees on forty-five, so...
And you're gonna plant trees here too, correct? The way it sounded just now, that you're gonna plant some trees?
Not those, not the large trees that they were proposing gonna be.
Not pine trees?
They're planting, they're planting oak trees, there's oak trees on fifty-nine. I mean, that's a Tech Dot internal deal, that you're saying one thing, but you're doing something else. And then I'm gonna go back to the drainage. When you put in a V ditch, you're going to have erosion, you're going to have sedimentation. The whole thing about Harden County, Tyler County, all these counties up here, we wanna slow the water down. We need to slow the water down from getting to Village Creek and then the Nature's River. We do not need to speed the water up. We need to slow the water down. Having trees, having your native vegetation through the Big Thicket, the floodplain, that's what slows that water down. The faster it gets to Beaumont, the more problems Beaumont, the more problems Pinewood, everybody else has, because you put that water in the Nature's, and Nature's backs up, Village Creek and Pinewood back up. As far as I know, they have not gone back to the Corps of Engineers, because this changes the mitigation. Um, it also changes, they did an EA instead of an EIS. So we're be, gonna be working on that too, going back to the Corps to say, you know, they need to come back and do an EIS on this project now, for their environment.
Now, I think you told me previously, just to make it public here, I think y'all do support, your group does support this hiking bike trail, is that correct?
Yes.
Y'all happy to see it?
Well, we, we offer this hiking bike trail, goes all the way to Oklahoma. Think about that, hot sixty-nine all the way to Oklahoma, what an economic driver. That you could start in, in, well, in Port Arthur, and go all the way to the Oklahoma border.
Ooh, I don't think I could. I don't think I could make it.
It would take several weeks.
I don't even know if I could do the eight miles in this. Y'all have to clear some trees for the hiking bike trail, is that right? Is it a lot, or a little, or...
So, if I may, for a, a couple of those comments, we, we visited with our, our environmental division director, uh, and mentioned that there is no need to do a reassessment or any impacts with regards to what we are, uh, proposing on removing these trees. Uh, we are still within, uh, within our permit, uh, requirements. Uh, we have informed the public, as I mentioned before. I try to do these meetings with, uh, different stakeholders individually. And we also did a construction update meeting, a virtual construction update meeting, where we opened it up to comments. Um, so from an environmental standpoint, uh, our, our division director has informed me that we are still good to go. There is no, no reassessments, nothing that needs to be done. As far as the, the hiking bike trail, there are forty-six acres that we are having to remove of trees for the hiking bike trail to happen. So, the hiking bike trail, it is, it's concrete, so, you know, again, the, the, the goal of protecting the trees, that's forty-six acres that we're gonna remove for a hiking bike trail. So, you know, in order for them to build that, you have to clear a lot of trees. So, but yes, so that, that number is forty-six acres to remove that.
Removal, take.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to table the resolution, and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, Matt, so, real quick, just...
Go ahead, Commissioner Roberts.
We're, we're tailoring mainly because it's incorrect in the writing, right? It was...
I'm not sure what's the...
Was that the reason we were tailoring?
Here, here's my reasoning, and Ellen's in my precinct, is it sounds like we've had a really good discussion today. Sounds like Tech Dot's willing to work with native vegetation, but it also sounds like they had a, um, in-depth hydrology report done. Uh, that's probably not gonna change. And, uh, it sounds like they're, they're ready to proceed with construction, is that right?
Destruction.
I understand the words. So, our senator supports Tech Dot, he does not support this resolution. Our congressman is taking a non-position right now. I don't know that passing a resolution by the county will have any binding support from our leadership. And so, if we can have healthy dialogue, if we can replace with native vegetation, and work with Tech Dot, uh, have someone from the association maybe look at their hydrology report. It sounds like due diligence is done, sounds like the architects were very misleading in our meetings, which has me upset, because I was in those meetings. Met several times with Mr. Jack, I think that we have the right to be really upset behind this, because what's coming out today is not, is what was presented over months-long or years-long communication between the engineer, designers, and the interested parties. And so, but I don't know that if we pass a resolution, that it will have any binding effect without the support of our leadership. I don't even, did Representative Bales have a representative here today?
Uh, he's actually here virtually, but he was going to just, uh, obdurate.
Okay, so, I don't know that we have any support from our leadership, uh, to make this even binding. So that's the reason I'm tailoring. It sounds like we have a good dialogue going on. Uh, it may be a good compromise to get native vegetation, they're gonna remove some trees. Whether or not we support it, I will tell you, Martin, I received more phone calls than I thought I would over these trees, uh, of, uh, of not supporting the removal, I was surprised. Uh, it became a hot-button issue for my phone for about four days. Uh, and so, but I, I feel like we're at a good compromise, and that's why I moved the table to you.
Uh, the city wants to speak. Mr. Hutto, if you'll come up.
I agree with Mr. Kirkendall.
This is, uh, the city manager, Ross Hutto, the city of Coons.
I believe, I agree with Mr. Kirkendall on that part, but I do believe that, uh, we need more support from our leaders, as you said. Does the Senator support the city of Coons, because the city of Coons has got a million dollars stacked at this, because of, we gotta remove our gas line, because they're gonna remove the trees. On day one, from the morning meeting, which was about two years ago, they've changed this on us numerous times. We had one conflict, the whole first assessment of this, and they come back and they said we had seven conflicts. Then they come back and said we had ten conflict. They kept telling us we had to apply for funds to remove our gas line, but later would tell us which part we were gonna have to move, so we couldn't apply for funds, because we didn't know how much the project would cost us. So we sit here and waited, 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 and they come back and said that they were gonna have seven monuments put in the median, the trees were gonna stay, they were gonna put seven monuments here, they were gonna let us go where, and that was gonna decide where we're gonna move our gas line. Now all of a sudden, we get told to take them clear the whole thing. You know, I've been, we've been to several meetings, no one ever said anything about the county or the city putting in any funds to put monuments in, bridges in, or nothing at these meetings. So that's news to me, that's the first time I've heard of that. So, you know, i- it's, how much support can we get?
Do you have a final disposition from Tech Dot on, uh, removal of those lines, or not?
No.
What, what's, what's the last you heard?
The last we heard was that there, there were, the monuments were gonna be put in, and that we were gonna have to revitalize our gas line on the monuments.
Have you heard from Adam, was it Adams who you've been corresponding with?
Yes. No, they, they've been to several, TM has been in several meetings with them, and, uh, we just found out that they were gonna clear whenever... So, we're, we're kinda, we're kinda hamstrung here. We applied for, I believe, a twenty-one, twenty-five grant to maybe help on the funding of the project, but we still don't know how much project we gotta pay for. We, we gotta get engineers involved, engineers can't get involved if they don't know what the project is.
We're gonna make sure somebody gets in contact with you, and have some communication, we'll get this cleared up.
Yes.
Yeah, and Mr. Gonzalez is shaking his head yes, along with his team, they'll, they'll...
But I'm, I'm here to say right now, that if we don't get funding to move that gas line, it's not gonna get moved.
I'll say that, I would like to know.
Thank you.
Did you wanna say something?
Yeah, if I may, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, I would like to say, uh, so that was a surprise to me to hear that the monuments are gonna be going in the median. Monuments are not going in the median, okay? One of the things that in the initial plans, they were putting all these grand monuments all over the place, which then again, from a safety standpoint, it, it causes, it's, it's doing opposite of what we're trying to accomplish here. So what I asked is, you put one monument removed from the roadway, put it in a safe location where people can go, pull over, park somewhere safely, and take their picture they want. Uh, across the state, we have some locations that have, have had monuments before, like, uh, in, if you're familiar with, uh, I twenty up in, in the Fort Worth area, they used to have a big, uh, State of Texas, uh, with the grass, and in between eastbound and westbound I twenty. People used to go, stop, and take pictures, it was great, but then they'd pull up and get hit, they'd pull out and get hit. So, Tech Dot, we removed it, you know, because it was a safety issue. But, one of the biggest changes that we made on here was, we removed monuments, because they were initially proposed to be in unsafe locations. So, there is no monument that is going in the median, uh, and that being the reason why we're removing the gas line. The reason why we're doing this is because in the area, in this first three miles, uh, where we have the four-lane divided right now, where it has the, that's where the location of this gas line is, as we remove the trees for the safety component that I, that I mentioned before, is, when you remove the trees, this gas line is, in some cases, about three inches from the top of the, it, it's kind of built up. So it's actually just laying on top of it. So, that's, it's a safety hazard. Uh, if, if we remove all those trees, uh, at that point, it becomes a concern, right? So we are definitely willing to still have those conversations, we understand the position that the, the city would be in. But again, this is initially staff from years ago, not having the knowledge of what we can and cannot do as an organization, and working with the public, making sure that we had all our ducks in the row to set up a project that was acceptable for everyone. So that's what we're trying to do now. And, uh, I, again, like I mentioned before, I'm happy to have the conversation with Ms. Buchanan with regards to the native grasses, and we'll, we'll definitely visit with, uh, Mayor Coons to make sure that we have a conversation on that, on that line. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Judge Buchanan?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, a reference was made to Congressman Babin in his position.
Why don't you come on up, Rachel?
Yes, sir.
This is, uh, Rachel Iglesias with Congressman Babin's office. I understand the congressman's at the border today.
Yes, sir, he sure is.
Tell him how much we appreciate him.
I will, thank you. So if I may, a reference was made to Congressman Babin not having a position. He is in full support of the people and their, their desire to have studies done for mitigation. And he also has asked Tech Dot personally to also have some studies provided. They provided information, however, um, it showed that there were no deaths in that stretch, and it was a hydraulic study showing the flow of, uh, potential runoff through the, the drain. So it was not hydrology, a hydrological study, it was a hydraulic study. Um, but Congressman Babin is in support of the people, and you all and your decision if you choose to pass this resolution.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Rachel. Uh, Representative Bales has texted me and said he would like to say a few words. He's got poor service, so bear with him, but he'd like to speak, and hopefully everybody will be able to hear him. Representative Bales?
Judge, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right, hey, first of all, I just wanna say thanks to Dr. Buchanan for bringing this to everyone's attention, and, uh, we've been in ongoing conversations with her, as well as here on this and Tech Dot, and glad to be part of the holiday, and just, just listen and learn all we can. And this will help any way that I am able to, just make sure that we are able to bridge the gap between conservation and safety. And, uh, whatever you guys decide, I would be full support of that, but just glad to help, go and forth. So, thanks again, and wish up, we're gonna have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Rep, you be careful on the road. And just so you know, we, we tabled the resolution for now, but we're gonna continue discussing. Yes, ma'am. What is your name?
Thank you for recognizing me, my name's Christie Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
I am a over-thirty-year resident of Harden County. Uh, my husband, my in-laws, decades, um, generations here in Harden County. Uh, we have seen through the years the destruction of our native forests, and it's heart-wrenching. I, I, I drive through this, this section of the road, and the trees themselves are monument. We don't really need a monument, because that section lies right in front of the entrance of the Big Thicket National Preserve, and it speaks volumes. When I drive through there, and the beauty of that stretch, it, it just, it, when I, when I go on a trip and I come home and I see that stretch, I know that I'm home back in the Big Thicket. Because it's the serenity where it, it comes down to where it's just, you're, you're driving whether north or south, and you don't have that oncoming traffic at you. It's just the serenity and the beauty of that section that is unparalleled to many, most of our roads through here. I know the, the gentleman said that that whole big stretch from, you know, way down yonder to up, up above is, is part of that parkway, but the sign right there does say, "The Big, the, the National Preserve Parkway." And that section right there that lies in front of the National Preserve is unparalleled. And I ask that something be done. I, I, I'm going to do research of what else can be done, to, to talk to our congressmen, our senators, whoever can, can do something. Once those trees are raked off the land, it cannot be replaced. And when you replace them with crape myrtles, which they're beautiful, but that is not native. And that is not the beauty that we desire for this area. That's what draws people to our area, all these people from around the world come to our National Preserve because of the beauty. And if we take that away from the roadway, we, we take a little bit of piece, that, that, like I said, is a monument right there that shows, "Oh, wow, something special here." There is the National, it's the entrance, it makes you know that, "Hey, something's coming up." And, I don't know what can be done, but I'm gonna try and do what I can, because I want that to stay. That's an, it's an important piece for my family, and I have, I have grandchildren even that live in this area now, and that want to stay in this area. There's, I, I know there's trees all up along the sides, where does it stop? We can't, the trees in the center of the highway, are we gonna remove them all along the edge of the roads too, to take away the complete beauty? That's the reason we all live here, is because of the beauty of this area.
Thank you very much. Your turn. Can you state your name, please?
I'm Terry Stully. I'm president of, uh, Southeast Texas Clean Air and Water, uh, Inc., uh, environmental group in Beaumont, that's been around since nineteen sixty-six. And, but, it's kind of interesting to note that this is probably one of the first... that this is probably one of the first since the end of those early meetings that took place over five or six years. Based on all the comments that you've heard to date, this meeting actually was a meeting for Highway sixty-nine. It's amazing. The virtual meetings evidently are not getting the job done. The in-person meetings that took place over those five or six years lacked information that others didn't know about until today. There are things that came out here, uh, native plant issues. That's an issue that should have came out in a meeting. I would encourage those meetings to return, uh, with the two groups, or the coalition and TechStop in person and at a table somewhere. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Please state your name.
I'm Teresa Adaway Dunphy, I was born in Sartre Lake, been there all my life except for a couple of years when I moved to Carpers. Uh, when I was young, I didn't even have a clue what the Big Thicket was, it wasn't actually a preserve then, but, uh, I didn't really know a whole lot about it once it became a preserve. But let me tell you, I hope everyone in this room knows what the Big Thicket is. And if you haven't, don't, don't know what the Big Thicket is and the beauty of the Big Thicket, and what all it has, then everybody in this room, or most everybody in this room, can tell you about it, show you about it, I'll take a kayak back in the Big Thicket. And, one thing very disturbing that TechStop just said in this meeting this morning about this area being our jurisdiction, this is, it is our jurisdiction, we are TechStop. So we do have a say, and we should have a say. And, you as a commissioner's court saying that, well, why should we pass this resolution because of the higher-ups aren't going to do anything anyway? Well, so what? You can still, you can still do it.
We have their support.
Good, so you can still do it. It may not be a fruition in the end, but it doesn't mean that you cannot pass this resolution, I know you've tagged with it, and that's wonderful, we're proud of that. But, and I don't have all the statistics, but like someone said earlier that they would prefer the trees, you said, mentioned that you would prefer there were trees, I'm with all, all, a local woman in Louisiana, y'all know, y'all heard in the news, just got killed because there was nothing in the median and someone ran head on, same thing happened to my brother-in-law. I mean, he was almost killed because of that, same fact. Why would you take beautiful trees to plant other trees? That just makes no sense whatsoever, none. And I appreciate y'all listening to me.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, state your name, good morning.
I am Erica Pelletier, and I'm the Associate Director for the National Parks Conservation Association. NPCA, if you don't know, is a one-hundred-year-old membership organization founded just three years after the National Park Service to be the voice of our parks. So today, along with our one-point-six-million members and supporters, sixty thousand of which are here in Texas, I am the voice of the Big Thicket National Preserve. NPCA and partners worked with the Beaumont District of TechStop for years to develop a plan for the Highway sixty-nine expansion that created the safety for the community and protected the Big Thicket, a place that almost three-hundred-thousand visitors come to see yearly. But that plan has changed, as we've heard. Um, I gave you all a copy of a letter that we sent to TechStop with our comments, believing that a new environmental assessment needs to be done, or at least looked at, beyond TechStop looking at it, and to look at the hydrology, and we've requested those as well. I also requested a meeting with Mr. Gonzalez and never was granted that meeting. As the voice of the park, NPCA is concerned that by removing these acreages of better vegetation, there will be increased runoff, sedimentation, and non-native plants introduced into the delicate ecosystem in the Big Thicket National Preserve. TechStop has made these changes with no real discussion with the public. They gave an online presentation with no opportunity for public comment at the time, and even stated in all of their documentation that the, they did not anticipate any changes. So why did they ask for comments if they weren't going to make changes? This situation here provides an opportunity to do both, protect the scenery and protect the public, and I urge you all to keep considering this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Megan Allen.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm relatively new to this, I didn't, uh, really know anything about it until I happened to find a sign on the highway that says save our parkway, and I was like, well, what is that? And I started Googling it. And one of the things that I've done over the last couple of days is graciously consumed, uh, anything I could find about it on the internet. So I've gone to TechStop's website, and I want to read you an excerpt from their, uh, environmental assessment. And the paragraph says, um, "The proposed project would incorporate context-sensitive solutions," or CCS, or C, SS, sorry. Um, "The Federal Highway Administration defines context-sensitive solutions as a collaborative," this is quote, "a collaborative interdisciplinary approach that involves all stakeholders in providing a transportation facility that fits its setting." "It is an approach that leads to preserving and enhancing scenic, aesthetic, historic, community, and environmental resources while improving or maintaining safety, mobility, and infrastructure, uh, conditions." It goes on to talk about how the monuments they're planning on placing are going to highlight and draw attention to our natural resources. So why in the world would you cut down the resource that people come to the Big Thicket to see? And I think that the issue at hand and the thing that's providing the point of contention for most of us is that it already exists. It's been there for decades at this point. The proposed, um, widening in the section, it's a six or seven-mile section from ten oh three up to just pat over the road narrows and goes over the village creek. That's already only two feet off of what they're proposing that they want to do. And I think that's where people are upset, is that the road is already that width, more or less, and that the median has been there for decades, and as you asked, what is the actual statistic for that particular stretch of highway, and they're not able to provide it? Or, we haven't heard it, um, for that, you know, specific six or seven miles, how many fatalities, how many wrecks? They don't have that information. So, it's just, it's the contradiction between what is in print and what we're being told, and then the experience of the Big Thicket being demolished, uh, right along the section where people go into the Big Thicket National Preserve. Uh, so it's not that we're asking for trees to be replanted in sections that are new construction, although that would be lovely. Um, it's that we want to preserve what's already there, and, and we're not seeing compelling, um, data or disaggregated data about, like, those specific sections and how many crashes, uh, involve one-vehicle collisions. Um, and, and I think the due diligence, you've, you've spoken to how they've done environmental impact studies and stuff like that, but it's not specifically where those trees were moved, and in this same document that TechStop has made available on their website, um, it very much does use the language forested median. So, I know Mr. Gonzalez has said, well, it was never really the plan, and our pictures were misleading and all this sort of stuff. Well, it's very easy to be misled when the language says forested medians, when the pictures show forested medians. So you can see where the outrage is coming from, that people are like, that was not planned for the last five years, and then suddenly we're hearing about it. It's really just that, that stretch that people are upset about. It's, it's not the, you know, the rest of it that he's talking about, and I feel like we've been a little misled, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Get him, girl.
Good morning. You're Maxine Johnston?
First, the picture that you have is of the date when the Big Thicket Association's, uh, celebrated the, uh, creation of the Big Thicket National Preserve Parkway in October nineteen seventy, uh, twenty thousand. I am Maxine Johnston, and I have lived in Hardin County for fifty-two years, commuting to Beaumont to work at Lamar University, and then I moved into a senior living committee. I'm ninety-four years old next month.
Congratulations.
I have heart of beer, and I haven't heard a word that has been said, you know, by any of our speakers, and I am so sorry. There's been a lot of miles that I've consumed for Big Thicket. I was an early member in nineteen sixty-four, and I served as president twice, served as chair of committees at various times, including the conservation and legislation field trips committee. Uh, I represented BTA at attendance at seven of the nine congressional hearings on park legislation, two of them held in Beaumont, and the rest, I testified, but six of those. This is to remind me of what I'm supposed to say. The Big Thicket National Preserve Parkway was made possible by the work of representative, former representative Jim Turner, and the passage was celebrated, as I have said earlier, on October twentieth, two thousand. There are more than four hundred units of the National Park Service, and many travelers, including Texans, are unaware of the existence of the preserve. The parkway probably intrigues them and encourages them to stop at the visitor's center. Some will stay longer to hike, and some, uh, on some of the trails, and probably the data that you have been given about visitors and economic impacts for the preserve will surprise you. We, the Park Service protects the resources and, and there's obviously the data on visitor that you have in the, the thing I distributed, page two, uh, or, uh... Anyway, those, uh, data on that chart that's on the second page shows you that there were over two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand visitors who spent twenty thousand, twenty million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars in local hotels, motels, restaurants, and travel place necessities. Those served about two, we have created about two-hundred-and-seventy-four jobs. This is in the report that the Park Service did for twenty twenty-one. And, uh, the labor income was nine, twenty million, five-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand. Value added reached over sixteen million, five-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, and the economic, uh, this was set at twenty-eight million, four-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand. That's all on the, uh, page, chart that I gave you. We have excellent, good, uh, for sure, leadership with interpreters, resource managers, law enforcement personnel, and they work diligently to protect their, their resources and to reserve visitors. Finally, the Big Thicket National Preserve Parkway serves to attract travelers to visit the preserve, and the loss of a hundred-and-forty-five acres of trees could result in the loss of some visitors. I think the value of the preserve is obvious to everyone. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. I want to, uh, thank everybody for coming today and stating your position. Uh, thanks to TechStop and the association for, uh, telling us exactly what's going on here. And, uh, to TechStop, I would just say that if y'all would like to have a, uh, in-person meeting to talk about this project at any time, I would, uh, offer up the courthouse for y'all to do that. And, uh, we'd be glad to, to host that and, and work with you to, uh, get the word out if you decide to do that. Anything else?
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan.
We appreciate it very much.
Very welcome.
I think we all agree on wanting improvements, but I think.
I'm sorry?
I, I think we all agree on we want improvements, but it seems like we could come together to resolve this issue. We're all, we're just going to figure that out.
I think so. Thank you, Mr. Hutton. Do you have something different to say than has already been said?
I sure do, but it's not anything that's.
I'll give you one minute, come on up.
Engineering laws, oh, this is so short.
Go ahead.
Not anything engineering laws or anything like that.
Go ahead.
But about ten years ago, my husband had an accident, uh, coming back from Dallas on two eighty-seven in a beautifully wooded area, and he tore up a couple of trees, tore up the car, and almost killed himself. I'm glad they didn't come mow down the forest, because my husband fell asleep and ran into a tree. So are we going to start cutting down trees to help people who aren't good drivers, who are drunk, who are on marijuana, who fall asleep, who have strokes, who have heart attack? We can't just start cutting down trees everywhere because people running into them? Learn how to drive, people quit drinking.
Thank you all again very much, we're going to move along to item number eight. Make the resolution, say anything. Okay, we better. Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, item number eight is presentation of a draft version of the two thousand twenty-three Hardin County Atlas. It's requested by Mr. Carl Marshall with the Southeast Texas Regional Planting Commission.
Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Marshall, how are you?
It's the annual presentation of the, uh, Hardin County Atlas. Um, just, you guys just review it, and I'll try to get back with you by next Thursday, and then we'll make the changes, and I'll start printing those books probably that Friday or then next Monday.
So, you need to hear back from us by when?
By the end of this, uh, end of November, right?
By the end of November?
Yeah.
All right, who's the issue today?
December first is Thursday.
Yeah, December first is Thursday, so I can hear back by Thursday.
Wow, it's already here.
Yeah.
All right, we will do, thank you very much, everybody received their deck. All right, thanks, Carl. Jane, did you want to say anything?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Jane Moore, Southeast Texas. Just want to let everybody know that I appreciate working with you guys. From item one to transportation, December first.
Congratulations.
I'll still be in G.I.S. Ram, it's just I'll be in a different department.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm good, I guess so, thank you. I was letting Jeff get in here because he's next. Maybe, if anybody has any questions. Item number nine, discuss, consider, and possibly authorize the county's administration and engineering consultants to proceed on the development of the proposed projects associated with the Community Development Block Grant mitigation, also known as CDBG-MET, regional method of distribution application pursuant to the input provided by Commissioner's Court, city officials, and other stakeholders during project development workshops that the Commissioner's Court held on November the eighth and the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, this is just a request by Mr. Wilkshire, the run administrators, and, uh, Mr. Levens, the project engineer, to, uh, move forward with the projects that we identified. I think that was last Tuesday, and to submit that, uh, I guess to finalize that, uh, initial application and get that posted online, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, and, um...
Any questions or comments regarding that, someone? Have motion by Commissioner Perkandall, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And thank you, Patrick, uh, if you're still there, we appreciate all the work that both of y'all and your teams are doing. Item ten is acceptance of vehicle allowance declaration affidavit from Commissioner, Commissioner L.W. Cooper Jr., precinct one. This is an affidavit from the Commissioner to decline his vehicle allowance effective as of December fifth, uh, two thousand twenty-two. That is the date that the county vehicle will be issued to the Commissioner, and I'm going to accept that affidavit.
Sir.
That motion by Lieutenant Daniel, seconded by... That motion by Lieutenant Daniel, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten, considered request by Alex Parker, flow plan administrator, to approve final play out of Golden Trails, a subdivision out of and part of M Pivoto survey. Aft track number four nineteen of Hardin County, Texas, into twenty-one lots along the west side of Golden Lane, located in precinct four. Commissioner Roberts, that's in your precinct.
Yes, sir. We've looked at that, and it's what it is. The only, the only comment I have on it is the width of the road of Golden Lane. It's a small, small lane road. It's not very wide. I don't know if there, I know we don't have any more right of way through there to widen it. I think, you know, you're adding, it was twenty-one, it's twenty-one lots, right? You're adding twenty-one houses in there. It might make a little congestion. I know, and some of their plans are showing the road going out to Sweet Gum, right?
It's showing that easement or the proposed.
Proposed eventually. It's, I just think when they start building houses, then it's gonna be pretty congested for people that live actually on Golden Lane. But, yeah, I mean, the lots are there, and they've looked at them, so.
Mr. Parker, has the developer followed all of the state laws and the county regulations?
Yes, sir.
And do we have a letter from the engineer stating that effect?
Yes, sir, we did.
Anything else, Commissioner? All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Sir.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, considered request by Aaron Tucker, emergency management coordinator, to approve acquisition of all or some of the following properties utilizing community development block grant, disaster recovery, local buyout, and acquisition program funding. Item A is the address of ninety-four thirty-six Cooks Lake Road in Lumberton. This property is located in the floodway, and the appraiser's opinion of value is one million dollars. Item B, eleven fifteen East Pine Shadows Drive, Sour Lake, Texas. This is located in flood zone A E, and the appraiser's opinion of value is one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Item C is four fifty-four Pine Point Drive, Sour Lake, Texas. This is located in flood zone A E, and the appraiser's opinion of value is one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Item D is four sixty-seven Pine Shadows Drive, Sour Lake, Texas, located in flood zone A E, and the appraiser's opinion of value is three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Commissioner, this has been on the agenda previously, maybe not listed exactly like this, provided this data, but I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that there was a list of about twenty properties, give or take. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And it was submitted to the G L O. These are the four properties that the G L O and the federal government have approved to move forward through this acquisition program, and there's some new information I wanted to make sure that the court's aware of. For instance, on item A, I believe that the original budget was somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars for that property. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And as you can see, the appraiser's opinion of value came in at one million dollars. So that's about a bit higher than we expected, and I wanted to make sure that everybody on the court knows that before we decide to move forward with it. And then I believe, which item is the one that's the rental house? D, item D, four sixty-seven West Pine Shadows Drive. When we all agreed that that could be on the list to be an acquisition or acquired or buyout, however you wanna term that property, it was damaged. It needed to be bought out. Since that time, I believe it's been purchased by a corporation, an L L C. They have totally renovated that house. It's beautiful. I've seen some pictures. It's been shared with me by Mr. Tucker and Amanda Holland, and it's being rented out to people. And so that's why that value is not in line with B and C, because it's been renovated, and it's now worth three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So I just think that we needed to come back and bring this back before the court before we decide whether or not we wanna move forward on all four properties. Is there any issue with the amount of funds? Is there enough funds to buy all of these if we decide to do so?
Yes, there is gonna be now.
Because of L M I is the reason.
Yes, so, so resident A and resident C are both L M I. That was new information as of last week. So G L O's program actually states that they are considered L M I. So with that being said, that there is gonna be enough funding now to purchase all these properties if the court so desires.
I got a couple of questions, Judge. Did you have anything else?
No.
I didn't mean to jump in. What happens if we don't go through with this?
If we were to say no to any of the properties, I guess they could go back and apply for H M G P or just continue to live where they are. I mean, for instance, on item D, is anybody here associated with the four sixty-seven West Pine Shadows Drive? Are you the L L C or are you the?
Yes, I remember the L L C.
Okay, so you're part of the owner?
Yes, sir.
And my opinion is, they bought that house, they renovated it, and now they're renting it out. It doesn't really make sense to me to come through there now and buy that property, tear it down, and it become green space forever. That's my opinion, but of course.
No, we're not renting the property. It's never been rented.
But y'all have renovated it?
Yes, we did.
Y'all don't have anybody living there?
Sir.
Y'all don't have anyone living there?
No, no one's ever lived there. I was gonna live there. It got hit again by Melville, and that's when we decided to.
But didn't y'all renovate it after a Melville?
We did.
Okay.
Well, that was, I guess that was my second question is, if we went through with it, and you just advise it wasn't rented, but if that wouldn't be rented if we went through with it, we would tear it down, and you don't put it back on the tax floor, correct?
Right, right. And I think there's something else. When we first decided to, actually, this is an allocation, is that right? Through the infrastructure.
Yes, yes, sir.
But wasn't there some, some talk in the beginning, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, that these would be acquisitions, we would acquire them, and we could elevate them and resell that property? Isn't that what our initial thinking was? But it changed along the way. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. This particular program, we built in some flexibility on, you know, case by case basis to have the option to redevelop certain sites if it's so decided.
But didn't the G L O notify us about three months ago that we could not do that? These would be green space?
I'm gonna say it's technically still an option, but it would be relatively exotic to pursue redevelopment of any of these sites.
Does that mean hard, difficult?
Yeah.
Lot of hoops?
It's, starting with number one, it's in the floodway, so that's there, the G L O has a direct provision against redevelopment. I'm gonna say, you know, the other three are not in the floodway. However, the, you know, a budget has not been identified for the redevelopment of those sites, number one. And then, number two, the scope of work involved with, you know, the tearing down and literally building new homes for low to moderate income households is really kind of beyond the scope of the, of that program. So while it's technically an option to be redeveloped, it's probably not gonna fit within this particular grant.
Have we spent any money so far on any of these projects?
To appraise them.
Only to.
And then the administrative cost to the grant administrator?
Nothing against the owner or L L C or anything else, but how can somebody go in and remodel? If we're looking at buying out, I don't understand that.
I guess because it took so long. I mean, this should have, in my opinion, this should have been able to happen within about a year after the storm, but with all the bureaucratic red tape, it's taken until now. And we've been told, you know, one thing, and then it changes a few months later. I mean, it's been a hassle, just like everything else we deal with with regards to recovery.
And we were required to go by the appraisal number?
Yes, sir.
Well, my opinion is.
Is that correct?
My opinion is, we shouldn't pursue any of these.
My question is, why is the property on Cooks Lake Road valued at a million dollars?
A lot of land. There's actually two houses, so. We do have the option, I believe, still, we've talked about it, to split the land. The house that they actually live in is in the floodway. To remove that from the floodway would be the best bet, because it will flood again. It's not a matter of if, it's when. And to take it out of the floodway will also lower the water surface elevation on Pine Island value, so it'll protect some of the other surrounding properties. But I think it's in three different parcels, and we do have the option to only purchase the house. There's another, I believe, a rent house or something that's on the other side. There's a dirt pit there, and only half of the property is in the floodway. So if we remove the house and a portion that's in the floodway, we can still keep the other part on the tax roll, and it is billable.
That's number three you're talking about?
That's A. So it could take it down from the million dollars. On B, that house sits on a corner lot, and it's, I'm not sure what the build date on it is, but it's in Pinewood, so it's fifty, sixty, seventy, something like that. When the new maps for FEMA came out, the elevation required for any new construction for the house next door that was built, their driveway is right about roof level on this house. When Harvey hit, I think the house was up to the roof almost. There's no doors, no windows, nothing has been done to this house. And if it was torn down, the, where the position of the lot is, it wouldn't be a good option for anybody to build there now. On C, I don't really know much about this house, but I do know the area. It's in Pinewood. And we have bought out some other houses on this street because of the same situation. They were just built before our FEMA flood map started and before we were required to elevate. B, I don't really know anything about this property either. How much water did you get in a Melville?
Thirteen inches.
So the only problem that I can see with this house, I know it's been remodeled and all that, but the flood insurance rates are skyrocketing. We have some that are paying more for their flood insurance than they pay for their mortgage. And so I don't know, have you priced flood insurance for this house?
It's expensive, and it will be expensive for Parker's end. Can I say something, Judge, about the remodel? One of the reasons we remodeled that house at that time, we didn't know what our options were. I mean, we spent our own personal fund, Dr. Harvey, had it looking nice and got it ready. Two, a couple of months later, Melville hit it, and that's why we remodeled it. We thought the only option was to try to sell and take a loss on it and get on down the road. So hopefully that answers that question.
Yes, sir. How many times has this house flooded? It's definitely a repetitive flooded house, right?
As best we can tell, probably about four to five times. It flooded, I think, a couple of times in the nineties, and it flooded in Harvey and flooded in Melville.
Greg, is there any way, do we have any funding currently, or is there any funding available that could be applied for to elevate that home? Get it up about two feet?
None that have been currently awarded to Hardin County or not holding on to a grant. It would have to be a new grant application through a new grant program, you know, perhaps, you know, for a future disaster, but none, none at this time.
Jeff, can you remind me, the grants are paying for the buyout, and we're using the money from the.
There is no match.
There is no match.
Right. Grant, no match on these, right, because they're G L O money?
That's correct.
If we, if we did, what about tearing the houses down with the money?
Yes, sir.
It's all covered.
It's all covered by a grant.
We had talked about in the beginning, doing the acquisition portion. FEMA and G L O do things totally different, and we had talked about doing it as acquisitions instead of buyouts. That would require the county to either sell it to a builder that would build an L M I home, or the county would have to undergo that. These houses that we're talking about buying out, the last three are in Pinewood, so there's going to be restrictions for the subdivision that I don't think that we'll be able to ever overcome to put in L M I house there.
Greg, how many people were turned down?
Actually, for this particular grant award, we had four applicants, and they were all approved by the G L O. It's a little more complicated than that in the sense that at least one of these properties were also signed up on one of the FEMA acquisition projects that we had developed previously. They did have about twenty, so there's, you know, just a little bit of crossover there. But for this particular grant award, we had four applicants. These are the four listed, and the G L O approved all four.
That's not what I recall from previous discussions, but thank you for clearing that up. I like Amanda's idea on item A to break the parcels out and purchase just the parcels with the homes. As long as, if we didn't buy the rest of it, and somebody comes along and builds there, they wouldn't be building a house that's gonna flood.
Correct. There's a portion of the property that's in a five hundred year floodplain. We do not have elevation requirements for that. There's a portion of it that's in a hundred year floodplain. They would have to get an elevation certificate, meet the requirements, go one foot above the base flood elevation. Now, it's right on Pine Island value, so I can't tell you that it'll never flood again.
Sure.
But hopefully whoever purchased it would put a structure there that's elevated enough to not flood.
Can we require that?
We can.
In Harvey, it was totally underwater. Yeah.
Couldn't even see the roof.
Couldn't even see the roof, yeah, the property. You know, where you're talking about, where it's built up, it was, was a lake.
I have a question. So if we required it, is that a deep restriction that goes through, like the title company? How would we enforce it fifteen years from now?
When they come to get the permit for construction, then we would have an elevation certificate. We can require them to build, our flood damage prevention order says that they have to build at least one foot above the base flood elevation. Now, the floodplain administrator does have authority to require them to build higher than that if we feel like it's going to be a repetitive flooding loss.
So how do we enforce it if, say, ten, fifteen years from now, we're all gone, someone else is here?
He has files, so he would have part of this, this address as a buyout property. So the next floodplain administrator, whenever that is, would have a file on this address. We could put something in a file stating, you know, what the depth of the water is. But there are some, some houses on the other side of the road that have flooded even being elevated because it's right on Pine Island. So, you know, hopefully they will build a structure that is elevated enough without us requiring it, but we can require it.
So all these are precincts? This particular one is in, is in, what are your thoughts?
It's, we could always use the dirt pit, but anyway. It's, and I'm kind of being serious about that, but it, it is gonna flood. It's, there's nothing, there's nothing to save that property. They, back when Tech dot was doing, building somewhere, I'm sure, I think it was East Texulade in front of Parkview and stuff, they were hauling in load after load after load of dirt, raising that up. And that was before Harvey hit. And I'm talking, they, you know, Amanda tell you, it, they made it a mountain in there, and it's still in underwater.
Would have to be a, a tight house. They would even have some of those down in that area that flooded also. One of them was torn half by a tree. Be in the water that, that hit the house.
So what would y'all's recommendation be to do?
My recommendation would be to buy the portion that's in the floodway with their existing house. And the rest is, you know, we have places all over the county that are in floodplain that is being built on. I don't think that we can stop that, and we do have a requirement for them to elevate. And it'll just be a matter of time. Anybody that lives on the water.
How many acres is the entire?
Forty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, okay. Alvin? What's your thoughts?
Well, I don't agree with anybody ever building back in that particular area. That's across the street from it. There's already two houses we've already taken in. One was the one that had the big levee around it. You're not gonna stop the water there because you got the meeting of Village Creek Slough, Village Creek coming across during flood, regular flooding, and then that property with Pine Island backing up on it. If we, if we allow it to still go in, like she said, eventually somebody, they're, they're gonna come in and put a subdivision or something there, and it's gonna end up underwater. That's just my opinion of it. Uh, that's just my opinion of it. Uh, I, I, I don't know. I mean, if, if they're willing to buy it out, if, if somebody's willing to pay that, we're not, it's not gonna cost us anything. It may not be a bad idea to make it into a green area and like, leave it like that.
Also, one thing I wanted to say is that it is appraised at a million dollars at our fair market value now. But on our tax rule, it is only appraised at two hundred thousand-ish. So it's not, we're not losing the taxable value of a million dollars.
Alex or Aaron, y'all have anything to comment you want to make?
I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Roberts. Uh, I would take the, the entire piece of property because that piece of property was also, and a couple of others were on this, were also a problem with the cab that we had back after Harvey that lasted so long. Um, I, I was there. I mean, I was just right down the bayou from, and we had eighteen feet in my house, two-story house. So that's where I learned all this, so.
Mr. Kirkendall?
So if we buy it out for a million, does that make the people's taxes around them go up because of that sale? Or do they actually go down because it's non-revivable? Just once you make that purchase.
They're making it appraised as far as the land appraisals, they're going up around it. I don't know.
Do they use that as a comp later on if the government bought it?
It's a really interesting question. A couple of things. Uh, number one is that, yes, future appraisals that are done for purposes of sales or refinances, for example, this sale would go, uh, on, you know, the public, it's called the MLS, multiple listing service. And therefore, uh, it could actually support or elevate, uh, surrounding, uh, property values in that sense. The second thing I would say is the, the funds that would be received by the, by the homeowner, uh, we built in a certain incentive for them to reinvest here in Harden County, okay? Uh, whether it's to read, you know, build on a brand new site outside, outside of the floodplain or buy an existing house. And so, uh, from that standpoint, uh, the goal is always to, uh, to get people to use these grant funds and reinvest in Harden County with hopefully something that is, uh, is an even more valuable, uh, asset from a tax standpoint.
Anything else?
It'd be hard to put the owners of the adjacent properties in that position.
Well, there's already comps that cause this to be valued at a million, so I do agree with what you're saying, but with the way that, the way that property values have gone up so much, I mean, if we'd have bought this three or four years ago, I don't think it would have been, you know, maybe, I don't know, six or seven hundred thousand maybe, uh, put it in the value.
I think if there's special circumstances on that valuation, if it's an estate or it's a transaction between friends, the neighbors can go in and fight that with the appraisal district.
Good luck.
There's some, there's some house, um, right down the road on two lots for seven hundred and forty thousand dollars for a seller. So it's happening.
Mr. Cooper, anything else?
Well, I give my opinion, but I will refer to the two commissioners in both areas, whatever their recommendation is, I will go with.
Same.
Why don't we take these one at a time, uh, if that's okay with the court? Let's just go without an A. Mr. Roberts? I, I think, I think we should take it in so nobody could ever build any, anything in it. Motion is to approve the purchase of that property for a million dollars?
Yes.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, we'll go to Commissioner, uh, Young.
I'm going to purchase this property.
Same.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C, Commissioner Young?
Purchase this property, that's motion.
Same.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D, Commissioner Young?
So this is under an LLC, but this is for your personal home?
Well, it might, may have been. It's not gonna be now. I've already purchased another home in Harden County.
Is this, um, home ready to sell?
Yes. We've tried to sell it.
It's on the market?
It's, yeah. The market's dead out there since Amelda hit it.
So y'all had it listed ever since Amelda?
Yes, sir.
Or ever since y'all remodeled it after Amelda?
I'm going to purchase this property as well.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Judge.
Yes, sir.
All of these would be turned to green spaces, not be allowed to be.
I don't think so, unless, uh, unless I'm wrong about that.
If there's anything to add about what the county can do going forward, uh, things like drainage easements, uh, projects that, you know, can support the, you know, uh, flow of water and floodplain functioning, uh, are options. Uh, so just keep it in mind while you can't actually, you know, build a residential site or a, uh, or a commercial site, uh, it can be used for either infrastructure or recreation purposes.
Cause we were actually on the property.
Yeah, on property, A, I don't think we can do anything with that because it's in the floodway. Is that, is that?
Yes, sir, with the, with the exception of perhaps a, like a boat ramp or a park, something like that.
Can we still use that sand pit?
Yes.
Would dig sand out of there?
As long as all material is going out and, and nothing is, is coming in.
There you go, there you go.
Is there any, uh, news media here? I think it's real important. I don't know if any's on the, uh, uh, computer here, but I think it's important that this, uh, if this is printed, that the whole story is told because if citizens see this, I mean, without having any knowledge of, of what this is all about, I mean, this million dollar piece that we're, that we're buying here and then nothing's gonna happen with it, that doesn't look too good, but the whole picture needs to be, uh, included if this gets out to the public.
I agree with that and, and the only person here virtually that we don't know is, uh, with Greg in PTX. And, uh, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Cooper. One thing to note is that the county doesn't have any match with any of these. And, uh, it's a big deal to go from a two hundred thousand dollar budget on item A, property A, to spend a million dollars, but I think, uh, Amanda Holland or somebody had told me that they actually tried to sell that property a year ago for one point five. So, uh, they're getting less than they wanted for it, but at the same time, I think we're paying more than, than we thought we would. But I, I do agree with what both of y'all said. It does make sense to go ahead and do the other.
In the floodway.
Stop problems later on.
And no local money.
But I do have a question, Greg, about that too, you said about drainage. Um, could there be drainage through that property?
Yes.
Well, that, that's, that's a plus too, and I can explain that. Uh, that property sits, where it sits, it actually blocks the drainage where the, the house that was, uh, had the moat around it and the other house that we tore down. That water comes across there now and it gets to that property, has to turn and go the other way and zigzag back to Pineland Bayou. Whereas if you could take a ditch from the front of that property and dig a ditch straight across it to the bayous, then you would have a drainage going out that way. So that is a plus, that's a plus there. That we never could have done with somebody living there.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks to everyone very much. Move on to item thirteen. Consider approval of request by Aaron Tupper, emergency management coordinator, to allocate thirty thousand dollars of ARPA, ARPA funds uh, toward the replacement of two AC units on the Harden County Correctional Facility.
Same way.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You do have it in writing from the grant administrator that that's an eligible expense.
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you very much. Number fourteen, consider approval of request by Aaron Tupper, emergency management coordinator, for the county judge to execute the amended HDAC communication systems and services agreement with Motorola. The purchase installing program and MCC seventy-five hundred dispatch console in the amount of sixty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Subscriber radios in the amount of one, one million, five hundred and twenty thousand, eighty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. APX eighty-five hundred consolates in the dispatch center in the amount of fifty-five thousand, twenty-six dollars and five cents. And APX eight thousand radios in the amount of ninety thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and sixty cents. The total agreement price is one million, seven hundred and thirty dollars, one million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And sixty, y'all see it, one, seven, three, zero, sixty-three point sixty-one. Which will utilize ARPA funds as approved by Commissioner's court on May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. This amendment decreases the total of the previous approved, uh, contract by ninety-nine dollars and cleans up some of the cross, cost discrepancies in that agreement.
Same way.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifteen, consider approval of request by Aaron Tupper, director of technology, to purchase a Dell Power Vault ME zero, a five zero one two storage array to assist in further virtualization of the county's data in the amount of nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents, utilizing the Texas DIR contract, which will be funded utilizing, utilizing allocation of ARPA funds. This is a, uh, storage array that goes with the server, is that right?
Yes, sir. This is a storage array that'll attach to the server and make it basically where we have more room to digitally store our data.
And the, uh, grant administrator says this is an eligible use of ARPA funds?
Yes, it is.
Some of them. Who made the motion first? Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item sixteen, consider request, I'm sorry, consider approval of request by Aaron Tupper, director of technology, to replace the nine-one-one reporting system in the amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission nine-one-one program will reimburse the county in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And the remaining two hundred and seventy-one dollars will be covered by the county's budget.
Same way.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seventeen, consider approval of request by Aaron Tupper, director of technology, to authorize the county judge to sign a copier lease agreement with Novatek Incorporated for the replacement of a copier in the county courtroom and a blanket authorization for the county judge to execute all future copier lease agreements with Novatek Incorporated to meet the department's needs.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Just to remind the court, y'all, uh, gave a blanket approval for me to do that in the past for Xerox, but we're using this company now for copiers, or at least in the foreseeable future because, uh, we've been having a hard time, uh, the purchasing agent has in getting copiers from Xerox. And the, uh, technology department found some good copiers of, of this cost from Novatek, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eighteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall to pay Texas Materials Group Inc. invoice number two zero one one three three zero five four in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and twelve cents for limestone base for R and B two department.
Judge, Misty had a comment.
I was just gonna say that Novatek is a DIR vendor, just.
They're DIR?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Same.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall on item number eighteen. Any other discussion?
Uh.
I would just like to state that, uh, item number twenty-seven on this agenda, uh, passed directly into number eighteen here. This is why we would request, or Commissioner Roberts requests the, uh, I hope I'm reading that right, Anna, the workshop, yes?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
I was just gonna say that we're buying the same amount of tonnage, uh, but with inflation, the rock is nearly double. And so that's why we're having to bring these invoices. They're already approved, vendor, and approved in the budget. Same thing over to ten thousand right now, that's kind of cool, just for, just for the record.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nineteen, consider request by Shirley Cook, tax assessor collector, to approve and accept for filing amendments of the court the transcript for the two thousand twenty-two tax assessor collector continuing education hours as required by Senate Bill five forty-six for Shirley Cook to tax and Lisa Finn, the chief deputy tax.
Same way.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, is that right? Thank you. Commissioner Roberts, any other discussion? Anything you want to say?
I do.
Go ahead.
We, we tried.
First of all, first of all, if we requisition a sign to go outside and say, "Please board the session."
I think the chief deputy's been getting on them. And we appreciate it.
This is, this is maintenance that Lisa and I both have to handle as certified tax assessor collectors. And also I would like to say that I have gained a CTO professional this year as well, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the, uh, trade you brought this question.
You're very welcome. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty, consider request by Miranda Harrington, human resources director, to present recommendation from the Healthy County Committee regarding county-specific incentive programs and possibly approve the recommendation made by the committee.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our first item of business, uh, with the committee was to appoint a committee chair and we voted for Shirley Cook. So she will be presenting all recommendations, y'all.
Great. Hold up, Miss Cooks.
Sheriff's not here today, so.
He is, he is.
He's right behind you.
Maybe we weren't supposed to tell you.
I wish you had known. Thank you. Um, first of all, the court did, uh, grant us approval to have a committee. Um, and we have had a couple of meetings. Uh, it was just an overview and I think they gave you some of my notes. Um, the county has potential to earn up to nine thousand dollars for participating in Healthy County. So, um, you know, since COVID, I think morale is kind of down and we need some encouraging. And I think, uh, this little tentative plan that we have will encourage the employees to join Healthy County and hopefully on the county level have some, uh, monthly incentives. So that's what we were talking about, um, uh, trying to get, having some things every month that would encourage people to live healthier lives. Um, getting in, uh, Healthy includes a broad range of degrees, uh, having your annual exams. Uh, getting our vitals such as blood pressure, diabetes, heart health, weight and stress levels under control. I know we know, nobody has stress here. Um, but there's many ways that we can help with those, thank you, Ellen. We're, help with those issues. We want to start now. So what we'd like to do is ask all elected officials and department heads to encourage all the employees to join Healthy County and Sonic Boom on December the first, twenty-two, if they have not already. The incentive period would be, uh, December the first, twenty-two to September thirtieth, uh, twenty-three. Uh, what we are, are asking something from Commissioner's court and that would be to approve giving any employee that's participating in the program a PTO day if they have their annual exam. Proof would be required and it would only be one PTO day for the incentive period, which is almost a year. Uh, during the incentive period, we would also like to ask each department for our, uh, monthly incentives is to give ten dollars. That would just be for like a drawing or an incentive to have a contest between offices. That would go towards just a, like a gift card or prize or something like that. Um, and that would also encourage each employees, all the employees to participate. So we're always open to suggestions on anything like that. In the spring, we're planning a five K color run for the employees and their families, which we think would be good to help encourage healthy living within our family unit as well as employees.
How far is a five K? Is it five miles?
No, it's not three, it's like three.
Three point three, three point one, thank you.
About a half mile.
For myself, I have participated in five Ks and know a lot of fun and they, and it passes that quickly, so. I, I think we can all, you know, do that.
I just.
I know.
Sort of.
Uh, but of this, there would be no expenses to county for this program, just, just that one PTO day, each department head. Um, I have also contacted the Health Club in Salisbury and they've agreed to meet with us next Tuesday to have some, uh, program, a wellness program that possibly the county employees could participate in. We'll find out more about that on Tuesday. And, uh, hopefully the court will realize the benefits of employees getting better health through this program. So all reporting would go through HR and, uh, we're gonna kick off the program on December the first, so.
How would they sign up for, when it says encourage all to sign up?
In the insurance packet that we received, there is a page that has the Healthy County and Sonic Boom information on it. You go on that website and sign up and you get a Fitbit, uh, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And then also, um, once this is approved, there, uh, the committee will send out a flyer to all personnel to let them know the benefits of it, how they can sign up.
In the past, when we had Healthy County, and I know our office participated a lot, we had a, a good, uh, you know, have you done? In the past, when we had Healthy County, and I know our office participated a lot, we had a, a good, uh, you know, have you done your steps today? Have you got, you know, and then we, we would end up from Tac or from Healthy County, we would get, um, gift cards
Yes.
at the end, which we got some pretty, pretty good prizes. So, so that's all I have.
You're just asking us to approve the PTO day for now and to encourage everybody to join?
Yes, sir.
I agree with that. And that's a motion.
Thank you.
That motion by Judge McDaniel, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And thank y'all for doing this and getting the word out to everybody.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty-one, consider request by Melinda, Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director, to approve a revised health insurance dependent coverage policy. This had to be revised, uh, due to the decision we made a few meetings ago to increase the amount of, uh, uh, insurance costs that we're paying for each, uh, employee and your dependents. Yes, ma'am.
Similar. Same.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-two, consider approval of request by Misty Sims, purchasing agent, to present results of bids received for overlaying approximately five thousand, two hundred and eighty feet by eighteen feet on Hayes Row located in precinct two and possibly awarded successful vendor. Ms. Sims?
Bids were opened on November tenth, twenty-twenty-two at two PM in the purchasing department office. Myself, Erica Singletary, and a representative from CCC Blacktopping were present. CMM Construction bid three dollars and fifty cents a square yard, and CCC Blacktopping bid four dollars and forty-five cents a square yard.
Mr. Kirkendall?
Mr. Kirkendall. Second.
Uh, approving CMM?
CMM, yes, sir. Love you.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to approve the bid from CMM and award. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-three, consider and possibly modify the award for motor fuel, oil, and lubricants for all Wilton Bridge departments and emergency generators previously awarded in Commissioners Court on November eighth, as requested by Misty Sims, purchasing agent. Ms. Sims, this is to make a correction?
Yes, sir. The markup for Mid-Tex on regular gasoline was not entered correctly, so Suncoast should be awarded gasoline and diesel.
Move, move. Cooper, change this.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-four, consider approval of request by Misty Sims, purchasing agent, to authorize the county judge to sign fee agreement between Harden County and Lark Group Incorporated for demolition services relating to the TWDB Flood Mitigation Assistance Program called FMA twenty-eighteen.
Similar. Same.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-five, consider request by Connie Beckton, County Clerk, to pay Harden Inter-Civic invoice number zero-nine-zero-eight-six-six in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and fourteen cents for ballots for the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two general election.
Similar.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-six, canvassing the results of the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two general election in accordance to section sixty-seven point oh-oh-seven of the Texas Election Code as presented by Connie Beckton, County Clerk. Mrs. Beckton?
My office has prepared the canvas report for the November eighth general election. And with your permission, I would just like to present the winner of each of the sixteen contested races to y'all.
Sounds good. Is that okay with the court? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So for U.S. Representative District Thirty-six, Brian Babin was the winner with seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty-six. For Governor, Greg Abbott was the winner with seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty-seven. For Lieutenant Governor, Dan Patrick was the winner with seventeen thousand, two hun, two hundred and nine. For Attorney General, Ken Paxton was the winner, seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy. Comptroller of Public Accounts, Glenn Hager, with seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifteen. Commissioner of the General Land Office, Don Buckingham, with seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven. Commissioner of Agriculture, Sid Miller, seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-three. Railroad Commissioner, Wayne Christian, seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-two. Justice Supreme Court, Place Three, Deborah Lerman, seventeen thousand, two hundred and two. Justice Supreme Court, Place Five, Rebecca Huddle, with seventeen thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight. Justice Supreme Court, Place Nine, Avon Young, with seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-four. Judge Court of Criminal Appeals, Place Five, Scott Walker, with seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety. Judge Court of Criminal Appeals, Place Six, Jesse McClure III, with seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety-six. Member of the State Board of Education, District Seven, Julie Pickren, with seventeen thousand, one eighty-seven. State Senator, District Three, Robert Nichols, seventeen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine. Justice Ninth Court of Appeals, District, Place Two, Jay Wright, seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven.
And it looks like the total number of votes was nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five in all races?
Yes, sir.
Move to further. Same.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
I know we're in a hurry, so I won't.
We're in no hurry.
I know, I won't do it publicly, but I encourage everybody to go back and see what the, what the, uh, each one of these had in common and want.
Yes, sir. It's on the website. Everybody can pull that up too. If it's not, I'll make sure it's there within an hour. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. When I say it's on the website, you can go pull up the agenda and click on item number twenty-six and see the canvas. Item twenty-seven, consider request by Commissioner Roberts, Precinct Four, to set a workshop with the Commissioners Court, county auditor and purchasing agent to review and make possible changes to the purchasing policy and procedures, Section Six, subsection C. Do you want to have a special meeting, or do you want to do that at the next regular meeting? Whatever's your pleasure. Uh, it, it looks like Commissioner, uh, not Commissioner, but Constable, uh, Jeff Coate may need us to have a special meeting before the next regular meeting to get a, a new deputy put in as an SRO at the school. And I know we're coming for our pictures on the fifth. Uh, if he needs a special meeting, is that a good date for a meeting? Or would y'all rather do it the next day on Tuesday?
I'm fine with the fifth.
That's fine. Why don't we just set a workshop for December fifth at ten o'clock during that meeting? And we'll go ahead and make a special meeting, and if for some reason he cancels, we'll put it on the agenda of the next regular meeting. And that's all. I just want to have a meeting for this workshop. Is that okay?
Sounds good.
Alright, that's what we'll do. So at this time, it'll be on December the fifth at ten a.m. Item twenty-eight, discussion only by any county official of any item not on the agenda without taking action. Any, uh, official present have anything they want to say?
No objection.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Connie, congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
She's newly elected. Congratulations to everybody who's on.
Now we get Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Yes. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Have a safe one. Thank y'all for staying so long.